Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the September eighteenth work session of the Salisbury City Council. We have several items on the agenda today. I guess what we'll do is we will skip the chief's. The chief will be here in a couple of minutes. We'll go to the fee change for service process. Okay, we're ready, Susan? We're going to you. Yeah. Good afternoon, how are you?
Good. Mark and I were just talking about something, we'll get into that in just a second.
Okay.
This is a draft legislation to add a processing fee for municipal infractions. This is a fee that-
Excuse me. Could you put that in front? Thank you.
I got carried away, Kim, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
This is a fee that would allow us to add a fifty dollar fee on to every time, to an owner, every time we have to issue a municipal infraction. And this is a fee that we basically have been covering ourselves every time we issue, issue a citation. And Mark and I think need to work out a few details with that because right now, the court, the court processing, every time we issue a municipal infraction, we have to have that municipal infraction served by summon server. That costs us fees out of our own pocket to pay that summon server. That fee is thirty-five dollars. That is our service to have that citation entered into court, through district court.
Is this when it goes to court? Not when you, like if you go up to somebody's house and you issue a citation that one of the housing inspectors does? This is once it's beyond that?
This is once they're, once they do not comply. Not a corrective action letter. This is when they do not, when they, their time has passed and they have not complied and we issue a citation. That citation is actually have to be served personally if they are local. If they are not local, it's sent certified. There's actually a spot on the citation that they have to sign, but they received it.
So this is the, this is the fee for the act of serving the paper?
Yes. And that is required by Maryland law. And that's Maryland law through district courts. It has to be served. So, in this, I think that Mark and I, we need to change a little bit of language because, and Mark can explain why that language needs to be changed for that. Is, that's what, that's what the intent of this, this ordinance is, to recoup that because what we're doing is we're having, we've had an increase in citations being issued. We are having to pay that cost for each citation and we're not recovering that fee from the defendant at all.
What's our annual cost?
It used to be five thousand dollars and it's, last year was probably about eight thousand. And I anticipate this year it's gonna be more. So, we need to, we need to change the law so that the defendant is actually paying for that. And I searched what other municipalities are doing and anybody who issues any summon service, I researched this online, anybody who issues any kind of summons fee citation, they all have the receiving party pay that summons fee. All of them. So if I was issued one, I'd have to pay that fee.
I guess the other piece goes to, if it goes to court and it's, and if they find in favor of the defendant, do they still have to pay it or do they get reimbursed? As far as-
No, if you, if you go to court, you're only responsible for the costs if you lose. So if you, if you're successful and they, and the city is determined to be incorrect in the issuance of the citation, then the person won't be responsible.
For the fifty dollar fee?
Right. Well, and I, and see that, the way this is now worded, it didn't make it clear that what, I saw that in the title that you talked about, service of process, but the way this is worded, it doesn't specifically say service of process.
Yeah, I agree.
We may not even need this ordinance because of the current district court rules and the current state legislation that entitle a prevailing party to recover their actual costs. You know, why we're not recovering them now, I can't answer that question, but certainly I think some things can be adjusted that we would be recovering those. I think what we would need to do is now at the court, we show proof of service, that we've served the individual, but if we can show proof of service along with an affidavit from the process server that my charge for this is thirty-five dollars, that we can then recover that. I don't think we can recover an amount greater than what we're actually charged for the service. In other words, it's not supposed to be-
Got you.
There's not supposed to be a profit, it's supposed to be an out-of-pocket cost. But I think that's the way it works. We may, we may be fine if we just change some of the procedures now and file the appropriate affidavits.
And that's fine because all, all my-
You want the money.
All I want is just because we're, we're increasing how many citations we're having to write and I just don't want to have to keep coming out of our, out of our coffers. We need to make sure that the people who are receiving them are paying for them.
Understood.
And this is only after it's going to go to court? If it's rectified and everything is fine, there's nothing, there's nothing yet.
Exactly.
So my question to you would be, from my personal experience, all those ones that are out there that we cannot find, that end up being over and over and over again properties that we are trying so hard to address. I recognize you want to be able to recoup the fee of the person who's got to travel to Pennsylvania or travel somewhere far away to serve these people, to serve people. But how often do we actually get anything out of those, out of those chronic ones that- Two ten East Isabella, the gentleman is incarcerated.
If that person lives out of state, actually out of three local counties, it's sent certified now. Because I'm not gonna pay that much for, to have a summon server go that far. I'm not gonna pay any more than thirty-five dollars.
The one we had in Snow Hill where we went to the house and somebody said he doesn't live here, we went to the house and it was him and he said, "I'm not him." We went to the house. Are we talking fifty dollars each time?
They charge one, one fee of thirty-five. They'll go, they'll go multiple times to locate someone, but only charge one fee. So if he has four addresses to try, they only charge one fee.
And if we can prove that someone is evading service in the way you've just described, lying about their identity, we can have a court order that they-
When you come up with a way to prove that, then we'll make you-
We've done it.
King of the world. How much money do you think this will generate?
Well, the annual fees, the annual collection was about eight grand.
Right. So we're, you're hoping-
I think that'll definitely eight grand, if not more, because we have had to issue more citations. Even this year, we've had to so far issue more.
But we're writing, we're writing fewer infractions, but we're having a higher number of ones that are going to court?
No, we're writing more infractions. We're, we have found a significant number of delinquent owners just this year.
More infractions, I think, more successful.
Let me ask a question this way, from a monetary standpoint. Is this fifty dollars, this fifty dollar fee going into a line that is specifically for paying of these people to do it? Because what I don't want, because we've doubled the fee, doubled the registration fee, doubled the, all of those in the last, in the last two years. What I don't want is that going into the general fund. If that is specifically for delinquent owners who we have to go to court with, then I think that that should have to stay. I mean, I know it's all gonna come out, if Keith Corddry were here, he'd say, well, comes out of a different, comes out of a different bucket, but then at the end of the year, if it's still there, it all goes back into the same bucket. So, to me, it's either the checking, checkbook or the saving.
The payment would go into that line that you pay out of that account, right?
You're talking about a revolving account. It would come right back in and we would have to work that out with Keith.
I just, that would be just my suggestion because I, I understand the cost to go tell, tell people that they've got to come do what they're supposed to do, but at the same time, with the doubling of the fee and the doubling of the registration and all of the costs, that all of the things that we have imparted into this particular area, I just want to make sure that it isn't going back into the general fund.
Or at least be able to give us the number.
Yeah.
Yes.
One of the things that I want, just want to make sure that we all heard from Mark is that we may not be able to charge. We have to, I think our limit might be, based on what I heard, correct me if I'm wrong, the max we are allowed is what we are billed?
Right.
Okay.
Because that was my area of concern, because I was losing my moorings, because it seemed like there's a procedural mechanism already in place where we can't recoup these funds. And basically what you guys are asking for at this time is notification and what you would need an ordinance for is if we're charging an amount that's beyond the expense. Do our, and I'm not sure if, convince me why we would want to charge something beyond the expense.
I would not support, support something beyond.
And that's why I'm saying convince me.
Well, I think Mark said earlier that it's Maryland law.
Law, yeah.
Yeah.
It can go beyond.
But also from a-
That's, that's a thing to be researched, because it seems like we're almost at a point where it's premature to have this conversation, because we need to explore the procedural mechanism that's already in place.
Well, Mark, I've got on my desk, I've got the, easily I can grab it and give it to you tomorrow, it's just the state code where it says that we have to have them served.
Oh yeah, no, I'm aware.
Yeah, so we can-
It was just, this, this was worded sort of generally instead of very specifically, as you explained today. So we'll want to, if necessary, change this, but I'm thinking it may not even be necessary to do it at all because we are authorized to reimburse, get reimbursed if we win.
During your research, did you find any, any legislation that, because we can make one phone call to MML and get a sample, if, if it's being done, they have it on, you got it?
What the, the answer is, the guy who was, job it was, was on vacation for the last two weeks, but called this afternoon, believe it or not, and told us that he wasn't aware of any other municipality who had passed a specific law.
That was Jim Peck?
No, this guy works with K O.
Caleb. Caleb.
Yeah. I forgot his last name is, ends with a C H, I can start with a K.
Do you think that's because, because the law is what it is, that they can do this?
Yeah, I think, I think we're gonna be able to do this without changing our-
Okay. Well, that's even easier.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's my only intention.
We just change our procedures to make sure that she gets reimbursed as she is entitled to with the case. Now, if we lose the case, we're not gonna be reimbursed, it'll be an expense.
Absolutely. Absolutely, because they're not guilty of the-
And that's something that we would have sought in the ordinance, from what I'm hearing.
So we wouldn't, in this case, like the legis, like this was written, we wouldn't send a bill, this would be a part of the court fees, for the fees, or the court costs.
It would be just like the court cost?
Yeah.
And it would just be a sort of like a change in the documentation.
Yeah, you wouldn't have to send a bill.
Just put on notice, if this has to, if you have to be served, you will be charged the thirty-five dollars.
Okay. Yeah, that's the only intention, just because it's, it's getting increasingly more and we're having to do budget transfers and to get that money in there. Okay, good.
Hopefully we won't have to do anything. If we do, just bring back the corrected documents and we'll talk about it again.
Good.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Do you want to do the property?
You can do the property first, since she's right here, and then we'll bring Chief up.
Sure. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. The next one is a property donation of six seventeen West Isabella Street. I was approached by the daughter of Grootred Shockley. She is the-
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's going back.
They own, the family owns six seventeen West Isabella Street and it is just a vacant lot that's very odd shaped. It's somewhat like a triangle. It's not buildable and they just really don't want it anymore. There's no money owing on the property, she just thought that the city would want it. So as soon as she told me who she was and a little bit about her mother, I said, "Yeah, I think we do want it," especially because of the location. So I did some research. In the cover memo, you'll see some achievements of Ms. Shockley. And then I pulled up, I got- With Kim. And I pulled up the ordinance of when she was placed on the city council. All that is attached and I have the deed when she left the property to her family. And I think this lot would be good for a park, a garden, a memorial, something for her. She was the first African-American councilwoman for the city of Salisbury. I think it would be-
I said a memory garden.
Yeah. I think it'd be nice for us to have-
A little memory garden with a little bench and-
Is it big enough for a community garden?
It is. It is.
But you know, I'm, I'm, I have a, I have a, yeah, I do, and I have a problem with these community gardens because we've got one now that's not being maintained on, in the Waterside Park right now, so I'm just thinking more so like a memory garden where she is, a plaque or something, or a little statue or something is put for her in her memory, maybe a little seed and some little flowers and something like that to be remember, for her to be remembered by. But the community gardens are, I mean, some that are being maintained, but it seems like on our side of town, the west side of town-
I would hope though, that we don't judge all the community gardens by one community garden, because we have, we have seven community gardens that are providing tremendous amount of food.
I'm speaking for the one, yeah, I'm speaking for the one on our side, is not being properly maintained, so I'm thinking just put a memory garden for Ms. Gertrude.
At the right time, at the appropriate time, someone will bring a recommendation forward. Okay. Great. Consensus to accept?
Yes.
Yep. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
To accept the donation.
I was gonna say, accept the donation?
Oh, yeah.
The property Isabella?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what we, that's the way we do it.
He came back too fast, he came back from Philly too fast.
Okay.
We should get to, we should get that committee together, or in, in all honesty, you and Councilwoman Shields and Councilwoman Siggers and, and a group of, of the women who have served, who've served after her, and do something there.
And I have talked to some, some of the ladies in the community that have served and, I talked with Sample Delegate Hughes and, you know, through some things at her and some things that we would like to do to commemorate Ms. Shockley.
And I have the phone number for the family. If somebody would like to be part of it.
Susan, what's it, what's it doing now? Is it just, is anybody cutting the grass or anything?
Yeah, they are cutting the grass.
Yeah, because I roll by there.
I told them about when it would pass and they're gonna maintain it until then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And Jack, I didn't mean, I didn't mean any offense to the other community gardens, but I can say, speak for the one that is in our community right now that's not being kept up. And I'm not-
The issue is being addressed too, as we speak.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Chief? Come on up. How are you today?
I'm well, how are you?
I'm, okay.
Good.
Okay.
What am I doing?
Where are we? In the community?
Well, you're gonna, with respect to what, I'm, I'm not sure that-
Briefing, just like, where are we, from a public safety point of view at this point? The purpose that we, we had discussed among ourselves a month ago, I think it was, somewhere about a month ago, that given the uptick in, in crime perceived or an unperceived, to get some facts about how we're doing a year-to-date and do that maybe on a quarterly basis. So if you could do that, we would appreciate it. No one asked you about this.
So I understood that you wanted a briefing, but I, I'm not exactly sure until now. I didn't really realize what it is that everyone here was looking for. So certainly I can work towards providing you something.
Would you be able to do something and provide that at the next council meeting?
If you like.
Would that be okay?
Sure.
Is that acceptable to everybody at the council meeting?
I think what the mayor had suggested was almost an update, almost like the-
It's the stats from the staff.
Yeah, and, and something along the lines of the, of the update that's given weekly from the police department online, which is not something, I mean, I can't watch it. I'm at, you know, I'm at work. So, and this was actually his, this was actually his suggestion, so I, the, maybe the conversation ought to be with him.
Councilman, just for reference, they're recorded, so you can watch them after the law.
With all of my spare time, yes, I will.
I'm just sharing that they are recorded.
The only question I have is, the last Safe Streets letter I have sent out is seven four, two thousand seventeen. Are we continuing to do that?
We will, as soon as we get a new coordinator hired and we're close to doing that.
I mean, I have questions up and down about number of officers, about some of the coalition building, some of those things, but we'd rather wait so that the chief is-
We can-
Yeah, because I think what I expected chief was to show up and have, it was my indication from the mayor, that she would have stats and papers and things and that's not apparently, and I don't want to put anyone on the spot.
Are you not getting the bi-weekly departmental briefings?
No. No. No.
Okay. So what I can provide for you today is essentially a snapshot of where we are at this particular important time, based on our last department head meeting.
That's perfect.
Certainly. So as you know, we've had seven homicides to date. In fact, one of our interactive briefings was discussing those, those seven homicides. Is there anything I can answer for you on those? I can tell you that of the seven, two are still open. We're still investigating two of those homicides right now. The other five has been closed by arrest.
How many of those involve drugs?
The one domestic where we had the infant that was killed, I don't know what drugs, what role drugs played in that. And are you talking about sales? Are you talking about possession?
Just involved with drugs.
That's a pretty broad question.
Yes, a pretty broad question. But that's the way I meant it. Broad.
It is, it is our position that they, that there is a nexus with narcotics for the majority of those homicides.
Okay.
That, I- Not that I'm seeking an answer, that, that answer just doesn't actually inform me.
Well, what is it that you'd like to know? I'm sorry, I'm struggling with it to-
I know. And I'm not, I'm not gonna, that answer just really didn't give me any information in reality, saying that a majority of them. And it's probably because of the fact that you really didn't know what was-
Pardon?
Can I be a little more productive?
To another?
So that we can make sure that you have the answers to the questions you want? That would be my suggestion.
I mean, the other, the other point of contention here too is that we do have upcoming prosecutions, so some of these I really can't get into detail with.
No, just a close, I thought they said they were closed, some of the ones that were closed.
Closed by arrest.
Arrest.
Oh, closed, I'm sorry then, that, then it was inappropriate to ask the question. That's fine. I misunderstood. That's my fault. Okay.
So I can give you the, the stats as of September third. We are inside the city only. We are down week to week comparison, so if we were gonna compare the, the week of August twenty-eighth through September ninth of two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen, we are tracking fifty-two crimes in sixteen versus forty-eight, part one crimes in seventeen, which is a, we are negative seven point seven percent. On the twenty-eight day, if we were compared the same twenty-eight days of August through September, we are down there too. We are tracking one hundred and ninety-four crimes in two thousand sixteen and one hundred and eighty-five crimes in two thousand seventeen. We are down negative four point six percent. In the year-to-date, up to September third, in two thousand sixteen, we're tracking one thousand three hundred sixteen part one crimes. In two thousand seventeen, we're tracking one thousand two hundred and eighty-one part one crimes. We are down negative two point seven percent. Two-year comparison, we're down negative seven point seven percent. In a five-year comparison, comparing to two thousand twelve, we are, it's a negative eight point six percent. Most of our crime is in the area of theft. We are seeing that across the board and across the city. And most of it is coming from items left in parked vehicles, which are unlocked, sheds and items left unlocked, unsecured on individual properties.
Fearlessness to some extent.
Preventable in a lot of cases.
Well, just because you have the opportunity to steal doesn't mean that you should steal.
That's right, doesn't make it right.
Nexus of theft, there's a certain strong percentage of it, that if there's opportunity, somebody has a wallet sitting there that they forgot or a purse, they're gonna grab it. You know, it's a, there's a thing where you gotta be responsible for your own things, make sure you lock up. It's not, you know, I mean, I'm not saying it's their fault, you know, somebody shouldn't steal, but there is a, a nexus of about twenty-six, twenty-seven percent of thefts are opportunity.
And I just wanted to say, I didn't mean to seem smug or glib, it's just that there, there is a big difference between crime that's related to the trafficking of drugs as opposed to drug use being in the proximity of criminal acts, because for some people, drug use should be thought of as a public health issue and, and sort of contemplating it in the criminal arena may or may not be helpful. And I, and, you know, saying that the majority of them did involve drugs, you're, I'm sure absolutely accurate in your response, but it's not an informative response that could assist anyone in making any sort of informed choices. That was my concern. I apologize.
Sure. No worries. The, in response to these theft issues, we have been successful. We discovered a, a large problem in the Doverdale area where individuals were having lawn items, you know, for, for maintenance, yard maintenance being stolen and then sold on the app Let Go. So we were, we were able to make a significant arrest there. The individuals, we have, we have learned, they've moved on to other items. Just recently, we found a bicycle that had been placed onto Let Go and was being sold. So we, we did, we did have a, a media campaign that we put out regarding these items, regarding that particular usage of the app and cautioning individuals not to purchase items from individuals who they would consider to be juveniles in particular, or if the price seemed to be too good for the item. We also incurred, further encouraged the use of our e-commerce exchange zone out in front of headquarters and we offered individuals to come in and have the items checked by our staff, not to determine whether or not the item could be stolen, because we would have no way of knowing until the actual owner reported it as such, but at least we would be able to, if someone did report the item stolen, we'd be able to verify that and then we'd be able to have some type of a record in the event that it later became reported stolen. and then we'd be able to have some type of a record in the event that it later became reported stolen. Of late, we've been working through a lot of quality of life issues in the Camden area. Some of those do revolve around theft, others revolving around just general noise and a lot of accumulation of garbage as individuals make their way to and from our downtown area. So we've been working on that particular problem as well. But I think that's pretty much.
That's good.
A good snapshot. Are there other issues you'd like me to address?
I didn't have an issue, Mr. Council President, I just, I was more interested in the structure that we have in place and the conversations that we're having with neighboring agencies. And I have questions about that, but since I don't know what structure we're using now, and that doesn't, just if we all get together later on, it would be nice to be able to see what that structure is and how that structure is working, whether or not that structure needs any more legislative, any more funding, any of those things.
I think one of the concerns was the staff level.
Well, I had a number of sworn officers, but that's a question I'm gonna ask chief every time I'm on the phone with her, and she'll smile and give me a number, and I'll say something, and she'll say something, and then we'll go get coffee and.
So how can I answer your question about structure?
Well, no, I can't, I don't have any questions about it till I see what the structure looks like. I mean, what we're doing with the coordinate agencies. I have, the sheet that I have in front of me is the structure that I had when I was mayor, and it is the Safe Streets structure. And I just have questions about every, each and every one of these particular agencies that we partnered with the past. If we're still partnering with them, how's that working? Is there still cross-border, across Virginia, across Delaware? Is there still instant communication? But that's, but without a structure, I don't have any questions.
The Safe Streets structure is still a good model, so we're still operating under that, that model, because it works. And we're not siloed, you know, we're still exchanging information. We have our Safe Streets unit up and running. They're, they're working to coordinate with individuals where we see cross-border crimes happening, for example, with the dirt bikes or with these, with these thefts.
Is the apprehension team still working out of?
Yes.
Out of the old fire on Isabelle, okay.
Yes. So I don't believe the structure has changed from what I recall, although I don't see what you're looking at, but there have been no significant changes in our structure as far as it relates to the Safe Streets process.
Just one question I have, and this is just kind of, I know in the past it was an issue when things happened in the schools, you know, the sheriff's office and their resource officer. Are they, what's the timeline where they're reporting stuff to you that, hey, this happened? We know some of these kids are city residents? Because I know on my street, one day, something happened a couple of years ago, and we ended up with about thirty people at one house looking to beat up on this one girl who happened to not be there, but it spilled over from school. How is that, is there, is there some communication there so you guys know that there was an issue? There might be an issue, instead of when you get there, you're already a couple hours behind on what had happened?
Right, so assuming that the SROs have timely information, they, they share it with us if it's going to become an issue in the neighborhoods. And they're, they're decent about that, we have a good working relationship with the SROs. And then the Safe Streets unit, they work closely with them as well. Because, you know, a lot of the issues will happen outside of school hours, so we try to relay that information over. Definitely.
Is the Safe Streets money, or did we put in the budget the things that we were doing with the Poplar Hill pre-release? With the gaining of employment and the skills? It was painting, it was drywall?
So, yeah, traffic control and direction, you know, flagger, and drywall, flooring, so.
Are they still doing graduations?
No, Poplar Hill actually has closed down, so they moved that over to the ECI, and so that's all got to be regenerated down there. And as far as my recollection of our budget here internally, I don't believe we budgeted that for that this round. But that, as you recall, had been moved out of Safe Streets and under the city, city umbrella. So that's probably an addition there.
And then who did we get as a U.S. attorney when Rosenstein left for some kind of pasture?
Some kind of pasture?
Some kind of pasture, wherever he went, I know where he went, I just can't describe it in a way. Do we know, who did we get?
I believe he's the Assistant Attorney General now for the U.S.
Yeah, that's a pasture, he's definitely in a pasture.
I don't, I don't know the name of the actor, and I don't know that anybody's been named permanent yet.
Anybody named permanently yet?
I could be wrong, but I know that they had an actor, I just can't recall.
Because so many times we talked about if it was a particular type of gun crime in these issues, and where the level went to push it up to.
Correct, if it gets, it depends on whether or not the, we would, we would prosecute locally on the state side or federally. There were a number of factors that would have to be viewed and weighed to make that determination. That's still in play.
So I guess my question really, it just, back in the day, you know, we had sheets of people who we were following up on, sheets of people who were coming out, sheets of people who, we did everything we could in the first seventy-two hours that they were out, because that's when something's going to repeat, to make sure that the cooling period was there and people could move on, were doing that.
Yes, that, that's still in play, along with Drug Court. And we just had a meeting last week with Juvenile Services to, since they had a change in staff there, to reinstitute some of the, some of the programs that we have going.
Anything else? Mr. Russo, anything? Okay, thank you. I love graphs. You know, we were throwing out those numbers, do you have any of that stuff graphed? Because I'm, trends are very good, as long as the scale stays the same. But, not that I'm asking for them now, but if you could.
I can do some graphs.
Where, where is the link to the briefings? No, I'm just saying that because when we hear it's.
You might be able to find it on Twitter.
It's crazy and off the.
Do you guys do Facebook Live or Twitter? Which one is it, or Periscope?
We have Facebook or Periscope.
It's, it's on Twitter, it's the Periscope.
Jim's on Twitter.
So it populates on Twitter, and then it rolls over to Facebook Live. For a sense of immediacy though, we could pull right, right now, we can pull up crimereports.com and take a look at some graphs, if you like.
No, I think, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you very much, chief, appreciate it.
Sure.
Councilman, we'll happily send you the YouTube links for weekly.
Yeah, I'd just, I'd like to be able to.
Briefings as they are.
I can't, I'm deaf in this ear, so you're gonna have to speak like loudly.
Oh, we will send you the YouTube links after our weekly press briefings, public safety press briefings.
Perfect.
So by noon on Tuesdays, you will have them?
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. The last formal item on the agenda is, a couple weeks ago, we had a presentation and a request to look at legislation for a balloon launch ban. And I said that we would put it on the agenda, and it is on the agenda for discussion. Any comments about it? Questions?
I think anything that we do, I mean, it would have to be in joint with the county, because of the squiggly lines. I mean, it's.
It's, it's been in front of the county. At, I was at last week's meeting, and it was, it was brought up at last week's meeting as well. They have not had a work session on it yet, but they do have the documentation.
They do have the information.
They had the same presentation as we did.
Because I think if it was a county-wide, I think it'd be more appropriate if it was, in our situation, if it was a county-wide ordinance, because, you know, I mean, somebody could release something in the county, if we could ban it in the city, but if they're still gonna do one, they can go on the other side of the street and do it. So, you know, I mean, that's the.
But, okay.
Is the party interested in this ordinance present?
Yes.
Is, is this more symbolic in nature? Because I think it would be very difficult to enforce.
Come up to the, come up to the podium.
I mean, I have no problem if it is symbolic, but I'm just.
Not at all, it's very literal.
It's very literal?
And to address your concerns, the city of Ocean City, the town of Ocean City has banned it. Worcester County has not. I do hope to go before Worcester County Board as well, help council as well. So it does tend to get stuck with local municipalities.
Should spread out, but for that point, you know, I, it can be banned in Sussex County, but fly over here to Wycomico County, so ban it nationwide, that'd be awesome. But you are gonna get litter going somewhere else's, you know, going back in somebody else's backyard.
The issue that Mr. Boda was talking about is we have areas inside the city limits that are county.
Okay.
Which.
Litter is litter, it should be banned within the city as well as the county, and that's how Ocean City has termed it, it is within the littering ordinance. It's not a separate balloon release ban, it is just considered litter. And, and your questions are, I mean it very literal, it's not symbolic.
How is it, how is it to be enforced then?
For an example, God bless her, but, you know, if you hear of a mass release about to happen, like happened back in July, two hundred balloons were released from Bennett Stadium. Worthwhile cause, but if you had heard that that was gonna happen, it should be addressed with the organizers of that vet and say, mind you, this isn't illegal activity. Maybe you wanna try to find a different way to celebrate the occasion. And if you look at the ordinances that I did provide you from other cities and states, there is a limit to it, you know, there's, there'll be a limit to ten balloons released or something, because you can't, if a kid releases a helium balloon by accident, you're not gonna throw him in jail. So every city and state did put different stipulations on what they considered as the illegal limit of the activity. So that would be up to the council, what you found was appropriate. Can you release anything under fifty balloons, and that's fine. That would be discussion for the council.
Why balloons and not single-use plastic bags?
Are we talking about like the lanterns?
No, I'm talking about T-shirt plastic bags that people are using. Because balloons are an issue, but comparatively speaking, and I'm just curious. I'm just curious why identify this as opposed to the single-use plastic bags? Is it because single-use plastic bags would be too controversial for people?
No, we can try to ban them too. I just, I took this one because it's so vital to our sea creatures, you know, we, this area lives off of our water life, and it is killing birds and turtles and fish, and.
And I'm not opposed to, but, and the example you gave is, is a good example, because it would be easy to tell a school, okay, we don't celebrate this way anymore, we have to celebrate a different way. It's easy to tell large organizations that. I just think it would be difficult to police, because once the balloons are up in the air, how do you prove who released them? And the drift of it is, so.
Right, if you could just put it, say, the, say, the city council does go forward with the proposed ban this evening, tomorrow morning in the Daily Times, it is now illegal to do this, please don't do it, find alternative methods. So you have announced it to the public, yeah, you're not gonna stop them all, but it is on the books, if somebody does, you know that they're gonna release a thousand balloons, and they do it despite this being a law, then you get to say something to the organizers, I guess. Not every law is totally enforceable either, so is littering. Does, do the cops throw, throw the cigarette smokers in jail because their cigarette butts all over the place? No, they should, but.
I was just seeing if you had any ideas, I'm not opposed to it, I'm not necessarily for it, but then I would raise the question again, why not single-use plastic bags? That seems like it's a greater issue.
That'll be next week, see you next week.
Next week, I'll be here, we'll talk about it.
One step at a time.
What's everybody's feeling?
I would like to see what the county plans to do, because I think, you know, anything the county would do would be all encompassing, and it really wouldn't matter if we did it or not. If, if the county did move forward with it, then we wouldn't really need to do anything with it, because a county ordinance does cover all municipalities.
I like the idea of the city saying we are opposed to mass balloon releases, because it is ultimately.
And what would be the penalty?
You know, I mean, the, what I'm saying is, there's no, there's no, I mean, if it was a state law, we wouldn't need to, you know, so there's a, you know, if the, if it's, and it may very well be something that.
But this becomes our opportunity to influence the trend.
It, it does, but if somebody, if the county's gonna do it, there's no need for us to do it. So I would like to wait to see, I would like to wait to see.
I did present it last week.
Yeah, I would like to see what the county would do before we move forward.
Yeah, because they encompass this all.
Yeah, and there's no, there's no need for duplication.
Well. I mean, there's the legislative history that would indicate that both administrative parties, if they did choose to do it, both parties that came to a vote, we could see where people landed at that time.
So if the county does, if the county does it and we do it, and their fine is higher than the city's?
Well, if the county were to do it, I would suspect the county's rule would supersede ours.
Oh, no.
No, well.
I would imagine that if the county did it, it would have to be on a complaint basis for the one current enforcement officer that they have.
No, but, no, but the.
I wanna call Peyton, tell him that the balloons are getting ready to go off downstairs, and he's gotta go do it, it's really.
No, the sheriff's office would enforce it.
Well, can I also say that the city has the Stasher Trash Program? The city has a huge anti-littering, I am on the Chambers Beautification Committee. So the city has a huge effort with littering. So why does the city have an effort with littering when it's illegal in the county as well? So you gotta look at it that way too.
I think this would be a cultural indicator, ordinance that would kind of say as a county, we are environmentally conscious. Because I don't, I don't, you know, just like litter, we really don't see how it's gonna be enforced, but it does help to have laws that say, don't litter.
I, I think from a practical point of view, we just had the chief sitting here, and we just went over all of the issues that we're trying to resolve with the resources that we have. And one of the concerns I have is where do you, I mean, where would you want, where do you want your resources applied? Do you want our police to go around? And I don't mean this negatively, but in case of a tie, who wins?
Then why do you have any anti-littering laws on the books at all?
Well, I mean, I, I agree with you, I mean, I, you go down, you drive behind a car, and you have somebody flicking cigarette butts on the street, and they don't consider that littering. What do you do? Do you have one of our officers, when he sees somebody do that, go up and take his time from his patrol to issue a ticket? That's a real dilemma.
It is, it is, I think we're talking about mass releases though, rather than one balloon and one cigarette thing. If there's littering laws, like I said, Ocean City just rolled the word balloon into its anti-littering ordinance.
Okay, so what would be a mass to you? What would be the number for mass for you?
Well, the example I gave, one of the states that has banned it, it's fifty, you know, it's up to the council, I don't know, twenty, fifty, I don't know. This is a small area, so you're not gonna get a mass gathering of a million people releasing balloons, so.
I, I just don't think that this is.
Because my thing is, even if you, if you're saying the mass is fifty, so if somebody does forty-nine balloons, do you still think that's not gonna contaminate the waterways?
Oh, I do, and I would like to see no bans, a ban on all releases, but it, it doesn't seem like the council is ready to say that, so then put a limit on it. That's what other municipalities have said. So just going with precedents in other areas, that's how they've dealt with it.
Well, the proposal I heard was, the only proposal I heard from the council is to check and see what the county is doing. I will, I will commit to calling the president of the county council, and I will tell them that we are waiting their decision, and if they would like input, residents of the county as well, and we can give our opinion to the county, and we'll go from there. How's that?
Follow me.
Okay. Okay, we have the sense, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other issues from the council? Okay, hearing none, we are adjourned, thank you.